I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular council meeting, 3:00 PM, Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. We have the call to order and invocation by Councilmember Chris Smith and the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Maggio. Please stand.
Dear Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for everything that you have given us and the rain that we got over the weekend that we so desperately needed. Lord, I pray that you be with us in this council chambers today as we can conduct the people of Bossier City's business. Lord, be with us as we make our decisions. Be with us each as we drive home this afternoon. In your name we pray. Amen.
Let's say the prayers, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Montgomery, absent. Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hammond, absent. Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
Counsel, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings Law and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly, and if there is a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you are asked to please step out of the meeting. City Council-appointed Sergeant-at-Arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July 19th, 2022, regular council meeting and dispense with reading.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any comment from the public? Please cast your vote, counsel. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda for today.
Ms. Brown, I'd like to make the motion. We approve the today's agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Any public input? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
We have one guest today.
Yes, sir. Lynn Bryan with Keep Bossier Beautiful.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
There we go.
Okay, thank you for letting me come and share just a few of the projects that Keep Bossier Beautiful is working on. I always want to keep you guys in the loop because I'm always promoting you and Bossier. So today I want to share with you a little bit about our community involvement. We believe that our community is better when our community members help make it better. So I put together this chart.
Is it on? Is it on? Is your...there's a power button on the side. I'll just change it.
Oh, there it is. Okay. Okay. So I put together this chart to show a little bit about what our community members have done. We feel so very grateful that we've had great support from our community and our partners. This office for Executive Director was created in 2020, in February of 2020. Thanks to you guys for helping to make that possible. But before then, we had about 60 volunteers, and we ended last year with over 1,100 volunteers that donated over 6,000 hours of service to our community. So you can see that we've had a great community support. We're very proud of that and appreciate your guys, you guys helping us with that as well. This is our annual report from 2021, and in addition to those volunteer hours and numbers, I'm very proud of the 52,000 pounds of debris that we collected and the value of over $162,000 in services that were donated by our volunteers. So I want to just highlight a couple of our 2022 projects, and I'm going to start with, I'm going to start with our Arbor Day planting on Swan Lake Spur. You okay?
I am. I was turning around to watch your presentation, and my chair fell off the air. I apologize.
I'm glad you're fine. No, it's no problem. But we started the year out by planting 50 bald cypress trees to add to the 35 that we planted last year, and it was a very, very cold day, and we were very grateful for everybody who came out. But here's a couple of pictures of our volunteers, and you can see that everybody's bundled up. But now what we're working on is we are working to save these trees because we want to honor our volunteers and those who helped us pay for these trees. So we're working hard to save them. I mean, who knew we were going to have a drought? But I want to say thank you to Mayor Chandler and the city for helping us with that. So today we have put over 1,200 gallons of water on these trees, directly on these trees, to try and keep them alive. We also participated in Love the Boot Week, which I know that several of you did. I want to thank you, Mr. Smith, and I think Mr. Hammond also had a business that was registered in operation in Love the Boot Week. Our operation Clean Sweep was a raging success. This year we had over 27,000 pounds of debris that we recycled and picked up, and then we had 7,000 pounds of metal that we recycled. And it was greatly enhanced this year because of our partnership with the City of Bossier and the Bossier Parish Police Jury, who helped us to add the collection of household and white goods. And we believe this is going to be very, very important and very helpful to prevent our individuals from doing illegal dumping. And here's a picture of the guys that made that possible. That's Wade and Mark and their team, so we're grateful for them. And we're also super excited about the grant that we received from Louisiana Seafood. They gave us $2,500 to pay for lunch, and we fed our over 755 volunteers with 950 pounds of crawfish. That's a lot of crawfish. So we go from big cleanups to medium-sized cleanups and then to small cleanups. So we had, here's another one of our projects with Grant Rogers, where we took on cleaning up the Bossier Strip. We worked with Shane Cheatham and leaders from South Bossier to clean up, team up to clean up. We cleaned up around the Arthur Teague Parkway and the Bossier, the Brookshires Grocery Arena. And then we started a new program this year called Pop-Up Cleanup, where we are empowering our community residents to clean up anywhere they're at. And it doesn't matter what size of team that you have, we will help provide the tools that they need to be successful. We will also have folks that are cleaning up just sometimes on the side of the road. So if you see these signs, we appreciate it if you just honk or wave or maybe even stop and say thank you. But they've picked up over 5,000 pounds of trash so far this year. We had our first-ever e-waste event, where we collected 5,700 pounds of electronics to be recycled. And we have another one coming up this September. We partner with the Capital Area Corporate Recycling Center, and they are the only organization in our state that's R-2 certified to recycle electronics and to ensure that all of the personal information is removed safely off of the electronics. So if there's individuals that have a small business or just something in your home that you want to recycle, we'll be doing that again in September. And I'm super proud about this program called Bossier Parish Prisons Recycle. You guys might not have heard of it yet, but we started this in partnership with the police jury and the Bossier Sheriff's Office in November. And this is a picture of our first, well, the previous picture was our first load of cardboard that was baled. And so we have now, we've had since November, we've had three baled, three truckloads of baled cardboard. And this is what it would look like if you could stack them on top of each other. Of course, it's not able to stack on top of each other. But that's 43, that's a picture of 43,000 pounds of cardboard that is now going to be made into something new, and it's not going into our landfill. And we're super excited that this program is off to a very good start. We have added, thanks to a donation from the Alton John Franks Foundation, Keep Bossier Beautiful has added a can crusher to this recycling project. So now we'll be able to add metal recycling to the cardboard that we have. And they feed 1,600 prisoners three meals a day, so they use a lot of cardboard and a lot of metal. And we also have just recently received a grant from Keep Louisiana Beautiful, a Healthy Community Grant, for $2,500, and we'll be working with Wade to make some enhancements here at the recycle center. We'll be painting the bins and doing, giving some educational handouts to people who recycle, and we're super excited about doing that. And we are grateful for your support. We thank you for what you're doing to help us. I know I'm working with some of you individually on different cleanups, but we appreciate you and the support from the City Council and the mayor's office. So I just wanted to give you this update, and that concludes what I have. And, oh, one more. We are working also to enhance our East Bank area by highlighting our restaurants that are working and that are down there. So we're going to have a gathering in September, a Taste of the East Bank called Dinner Under the Stars. So we will be working to raise awareness for our restaurants and raise resources for Keep Bossier Beautiful. So that's all that I have. I stayed under my time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Bryan, for your commitment to keeping Bossier clean, and we are so appreciative of your volunteers. It's so impressive. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Unfinished business. Adopt an ordinance to appropriate $75,000 to come from the 2022 Sales Tax Capital Improvement Budget to increase expenditures for police department, other equipment, and decrease fund balance by 75,000. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Free, a second by Mr. Smith, and we ask if you have comments or debate on this item. Okay? And the floor is open for anyone in the public who would like to comment. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance...let me see if that didn't pop up. Let me get that back up there. There we go. Adopt an ordinance appropriating the sum of $250,000 for the EMS Capital Contingency Fund for the purchase of a new records management system for the Bossier City Fire Department. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Free, a second by Ms. Maggio. Any debate or discussion, counsel? The floor is open for comments. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. Kerry Chandler, 29, 24. Heather Lane, Bossier City, Louisiana, 7/11/11. I would like to ask the representative from the fire department to come up and explain what $250,000 is for, how it's going to work. I understand what it's for, but how it's going to work.
It is for a record management system. When you get your PIO rating, everything has to be captured.
Chief, will Chief...get closer to the mic.
Everything has to be captured. Your times, your time on scene, your businesses, your inspections, all this is needed for your rating. We get rated in 2024 for the year 2023. The current system we have got bought out by ESO. So this is really a four-year contract, and I think it's a little less than 55,000 per year. I bumped it up because I wasn't sure if something would come up that we're missing or whatever to agree to the four-year contract. The reason we went with ESO, there's a sole source letter. ESO does our EMS reporting now, so it'll automatically sync with each other. When the captain does a report or the EMS report's done, it'll sync over on the fireside for the captain report or vice versa, so to save us time in that method also. So we're already using ESO, and there won't be a learning curve because this will be ESO fireside. Who bought Firehouse? Who we currently use that got bought out. Does that make sense? Did that answer?
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Any other comments from anyone out in the audience? Okay, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to amend Ordinance 90 of 2021 with Nixon Engineering Solutions to Provide a Drainage Study Phase 1A Construction Documents and Right-Away Documents for the Tinsley Ditch Basin Relief Plan. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
The Chair has a motion from Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Williams. Any debate or discussion on this item? Any comments from anyone in the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to appropriate $275,000 from the 2015 LCDA bond issue for the completion of the East Bank Fire Station. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Free, a second by Mr. Williams. Discussion. The floor is open for comments. Counsel, cast your vote. Business.
Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Jen K. Quan, King David Quan, LLC, location 3416 Marksdale Boulevard, Bossier City, Louisiana, requests conditional use approval for on-premise consumption of low-content alcohol at a restaurant.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Williams, a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Anyone would like to speak on this item? Mr. Quan is here. Or here, okay. If you like, it's up to you.
Hello. My name is Jen Quan, and I own a restaurant with spicy bowl on Marksdale Boulevard. I need to request an alcohol permit.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here, Mr. Quan. Any other comments? Okay, counsel, cast your vote, please.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $25,200 from the 2022 general fund, fund balance to fund officers with the Bossier Sheriff's Office directing traffic in school zones. First reading.
So moved. Second.
A motion by Mr. Free, Mr. Smith, and a second by Mr. Maggio. Any debate or additional comments on this item?
I'll be glad to explain what it is. You know, with the shootings going on in the schools, the sheriff didn't want to take their SROs from inside the schools and put them on the highways where they have to direct traffic in the mornings and afternoons and leave the school empty with no protection. So there was a meeting, and the police jury, the school board, the city council, and...
And the sheriff's office?
Huh?
And the sheriff's office.
And the sheriff's office. So they're going to need to put up $25,200 to have officers to direct traffic several hours a day in the morning and afternoon and leave the SROs inside the schools.
One of the things I thought about, counsel, is that we generally had in the past a corporate endeavor agreement, and at this point, we don't have that. Is that something that the administration is going to do?
I can speak to that, Mr. President. That is being drafted as we speak. But with the early school start date, this plan came together fairly quickly. And so the joint cooperative endeavor agreement is being drafted by Mr. Jackson, the attorney for the police jury. He's going to forward that on to me, and he, you know, and then we would look at it, and if the council had any concerns, you know, concerning the language, this, that, and the other. But at some point in time in the near future, that's going to have to be entered into by either, I guess it would probably be an ordinance, because it would be a contract or an agreement between these various entities. So, but yes, you are correct. It does require that. And however, we had such late notice, we thought we would go ahead and get the process started if the council was in approval of it. And this way, with, we won't have to pay what they call mandatory overtime, which would, that would, there would be no legacy cost, retirement, things of that nature, you know, so on and so forth, to the Bossier City police officers that would have to do this traffic direction if the SROs were not available to do that.
Okay. I'm not sure if Mr. Williams could answer this, or you. Currently, the city has an obligation of $100,000 for crossing guards. So is this money going to be germane to a police officer, or will it be used for other things?
Just, just traffic control for police, for police officers.
Okay.
Traffic, the crossing guards for the children, that would, that's another source and another, the two don't have anything to do with each other. This is just directing traffic, independent of the crossing guards.
And the city is, the city is responsible because of what? What makes us?
If I'm not mistaken, we have two schools that this would affect.
Okay. Which one?
That are in the city limits. They are city streets.
What school are we talking about?
I believe it's Parkway and WT Lewis, if I'm not mistaken, Chief.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Which would be, you're talking two hours in the morning and two hours in the afternoon. I'll let the chief speak to that.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, this is of the utmost importance to protect our children. What this does is not only gives the SRO the ability to remain inside the school, but it also increases police presence around our campus. So you have that outward barrier as well as those officers who are inside the schools taking care of our children. There are two affected areas inside the city limits. There's a total of six throughout the parish after speaking with Sheriff Whittington that are significantly impacted by this. On the heels of the Uvalde shooting, it's certainly important to increase our police presence at the school. And by having these officers in the intersection with their marked units and overhead lights, it increases the visibility. And this is actually a short-term solution. It's not desirable to have officers out there in inclement weather flagging traffic as well as, this is a great way to minimize the amount of officers that were being removed from the City of Bossier to flag traffic for a prolonged period of time. But with that being said, I personally feel it's of the utmost importance to do so, and we're working with the parish engineers as well as the city engineers to find long-term solutions to this rather than have a human flagging traffic in those intersections.
Yeah, I think Mr. Smith had a good recommendation regarding revamping certain things. Mr. Smith, would you like to share that a little bit?
Yeah, I just shared that maybe for the future, the city, the school board, and the police jury could partner together for a one-time cost of expanding driveways, curb cuts, making traffic flow easier. That way, officers aren't necessarily needed to direct traffic.
And that's something that the parish and the city is working on as well. I've been engaged in conversation with Sheriff Whittington as well as parish engineers as well. But certainly with the new campus of the Benton High School, I mean, there's not those issues because it was designed for the protection of the children. And, you know, we're dealing with schools that are sometimes 40 and 50 years old, and, you know, with stuff growing around things here within the city, it's a little bit more challenging to facilitate that through engineering.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments? The floor is open for comments from you all, if you have something. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to transfer $35,991 from the police department budget to the Public Affairs Department budget in the 2022 general fund budget. First reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Free, and a second by Mr. Smith. Discussion, debate on this item. Any person would like to speak on this item? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to declare the completion of the Walter O. Bigby Carriageway Pump Station Project by Max Foot Construction LLC at a total project cost of $3,836,000, including deductive change order number one in the amount of $64,000, and to amend ordinance 39 of 2021, leaving a surplus of funding to supplement fund 415 Walter O. Bigby Carriageway Fund. First reading.
So moved. Second.
A motion, Mr. Williams, a second, Mr. Smith. Discussion, debate on this item. The floor is open for comments. Counsel, cast your vote.
Motion carries. Public hearing concerning the city's application to the United States Department of Justice to participate in the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program.
The Chair opened the public hearing. Is there a representative to speak on this item?
Mr. President, councilmembers, Mayor Chandler, Sergeant Hilbert is here, and she'll explain the JAG grant that we're applying for. This is something that we do for a considerable amount of, and we historically have done so for many years. But if you have any questions regarding the grant, she knows it, back and forth, be able to explain those questions or those answers for you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Do you all have any specific questions about it, about JAG, that you'd like for me to answer?
You might explain and not picking on the new guys, just to let them know what it's about.
JAG is our Justice Assistance Grant. It's the largest grant that we receive as an agency. We share it with the Bossier Parish Sheriff's Office, and it funds things like our armed robbery task force, which is the task force that puts about, this year it'll be about 591 extra overtime hours. So officers on the street, patrolling the businesses around the time when our armed robberies kickoff, typically Thanksgiving to the end of Christmas or the end of the year. The money can also be used for other directed patrol, foot patrols in high-crime areas, and for community-oriented policing, and also for training, such as Judge Drew.
Any comment, counsel? Thank you, Sergeant Hillman.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
This public hearing is now closed. Next item?
Anybody from the public want to speak on it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Anyone would like to speak on this item?
Counsel, adopt a resolution endorsing the city's application to the United States Department of Justice to participate in the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Ms. Maggio. And we've heard the presentation by the police department. Would you like to have a comment, public? There's no comment. Please cast your vote, counsel. Any reports today? No reports. Announcements? I think we have one by our most competent city clerk, and she's going to share some public information.
Counsel, Mr. Darby had asked me to share this information with you. I was fortunate enough to be able to attend the LMA convention last week in Lafayette, and while I was there, I attended a bunch of workshops talking about maybe trying to bring some money back to Bossier for some different programs that they have to offer, infrastructure, broadband, for water and sewer. There was a whole bunch of different classes, and I got a lot of information out of it. But one thing that I got out of it, that the residents of Bossier, residents from all over the state actually can qualify for right now, is there is a program through the FCC, the Federal Communications Division of the government, and it's called the Affordable Connectivity Program. And it's a $30 a month internet discount for households if you meet some qualifications, such as if you're on SNAP, you get free or reduced lunches at school. If you have a child, that gets free or reduced lunch. Anyone that's on Medicaid, Federal Public Housing Assistance Program, SSI, WIC, Veterans Pension, or Survivor Benefits, or any other lifeline product, things through the government, there, this, you are eligible for this. You just have to go onto their website, which is fcc.gov/acp, and it'll, the form is there for you to fill out, and it's $30 a month. I mean, it's free money for any resident that meets these qualifications, and there's not a whole bunch of people that participate in it in Louisiana, and we would love to see Bossier get those numbers up.
Very good. Thank you so much. Very good. Thank you so much, uh, Ms. McGraw. We, we, we got a flyer too, so I think you're going to have it disseminated throughout the community.
Yes, sir. We're going to send it out to the schools and, and to the library and, and, you know, different community organizations to see if we can get the word out.
Great. I know in my district, it would be a welcome, uh, saving. So I, I appreciate your bringing that back to the city of Bossier. Mr. Mayor, you have a comment today?
No, I don't, uh, President, but I appreciate the opportunity, but I don't have anything to say today.
Okay. Thank you. Just said enough.
What a change.
All right.
I can talk now, can't I?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Yes. Please say, meaning is adjourned.